I missed it. We have a consent agenda. We have bills.
Both to receive points on file.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. And now we're here. We have the resignation and appointments for the two school committee vacancies. Before we get started, I would just like to kind of give an overview of how the process will go tonight. Just give me one second so I can fill my notes on that. First off, we'll be allowing each of the candidates in alphabetical order to come up to the podium and provide their two-minute presentation to the town council. That was indicated in the advertisement. I will keep track of the time. I do ask that you try to keep it to the two minutes. I will let you know at about 15, about a minute forty-five, I'll raise my hand, just so you know that we're getting close to the two-minute warning. After that, after each of the applicants have had a chance to speak, I will then ask for each of the counselors to take a minute and briefly review their review or their support for candidates, whichever they would like to do. But I would like each of the counselors to take a few minutes and speak to each of the applicants or to whichever applicants they prefer. Following that, I would open the floor to motions by the counselors so we can begin the appointment process. We will not be entertaining any public comments, and also there will not be any back-and-forth discussions between the counselors and each of the applicants. And I say that out of fairness to each of the applicants. We did request information. Information has been provided through the application process. Each applicant will get afforded two minutes tonight to make their presentation. Upon that, it'll be up to us as counselors to render our decision. I think that's probably the fairest way to proceed and not get into any type of back-and-forth conversation. I'd like to keep the playing field level for all the applicants. I would also like to address a situation where there were seven applicants that did submit on the deadline. However, unfortunately, there were two applicants that were deemed ineligible because they are, at the time, are not currently registered voters for the town of Portsmouth. And so those two applicants that we will not be hearing tonight are Ms. Malena, and I apologize for this, Anna Tchikova, as well as Ms. Christine Nolan. So those two, unfortunately, I appreciate their efforts. Unfortunately, they were not town-eligible voters at the time, so we're not able to hear them tonight. I would hope that they would still be active and willing to participate in the months ahead. We can always use good volunteers in town to serve on various boards and committees. So if, you know, and I would say that also to the other applicants tonight. Unfortunately, we can only appoint two tonight. We have five very good applicants. For those of you that are not successful tonight, I would also encourage you to please stay involved. It's important that we have good participation with our citizens in all of our boards and committees on the town. So, thank you. With that, I'd like to get started. And I believe our first applicant would be Ms. Sarah Chergen. Just before you get started, let me just get the timer set.
Okay, okay.
Sorry. Sorry. I have to multitask.
You said at 1:45, right? They're gonna give the...
Sure.
Mr. President, I can ask one quick question about this, and this is just an oddity. Every other application was timestamped except for this one?
Ms. Chergen emailed it over the weekend, so we didn't timestamp it in on the Monday. That's why the other ones I sent you with her email and my initials in the screen. That shows the time.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Chergen. I live at 36th Heritage Drive, and I have been on Equidnic Island for twenty years, nine of which have been in Portsmouth. I have four children, my youngest of which is eleven, and he currently attends Portsmouth Middle School. He loves it. I've been actively involved in my children's education since they started school. I've been a volunteer in the classroom. I volunteer on field trips. I volunteer at school events. I'm especially involved in Jordan's education, as he was diagnosed with special needs when he was in kindergarten. When Portsmouth was still part of the Newport Special Education Program, Jordan attended a Equidnic Elementary School. That's because that's where the Behavior Specialist Program was. So when I heard that Portsmouth wanted to have its own program, I was a little less than thrilled. And Anna Riley can attest to the fact that I called her, I met with her, and had lots and lots of conversations with her over this program. It was a new program. I was very nervous about his transition. But I'm here to say now, four years later, that I am one of the staunchest supporters of the Portsmouth Special Needs Program. I have seen the success firsthand. And as a member of the school committee, I would want to be helping this program, that's a relatively new program, on its success and help it to grow. I want all of the special needs children in Portsmouth to be the best that they can be, to receive the attention that they need. I'm a firm believer in inclusion and social-emotional learning, and it's really important for the students with special needs. We need to have these sorts of systems in place. I feel as a school member, I would be a person who could help to get extra resources, to be able to have mental health needs specially met.
Thank you, Ms. Chergen. I didn't want to cut you off. I wanted to let you finish your sentence, but thank you very much.
That was a fast two minutes, man. Okay.
Thank you.
It's a quick...
Go slower when you time it at home.
I know, it's not the same.
Thank you. Next, I believe it's Ms. Karen McDade?
Two minutes on schedule, so much longer than that.
And just as a reminder, about 1:45, I'll raise the hand.
Terrific. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the council. My family and I have called Portsmouth home for more than twenty-five years. We live in the house my in-laws bought in 1920. The Portsmouth schools have helped our son Jack get into his first-choice college, which is RPI, where today he finished his first semester of his freshman year. I love Portsmouth, and I want to pitch in to help make the great school system even better. Throughout my life as a teacher and a businessperson, I've always been focused on education, finding ways to simplify complicated concepts and conveying information in a compelling way. I earned an MBA at Wharton in 1988, after which I worked as a strategic marketing consultant for more than twelve years. Those experiences changed my way of thinking and approach to problem-solving, giving me an understanding of fiscal responsibility, the ability to gather, read, and interpret data, and years of practice in strategy development and implementation. As a consultant, I had to be able to learn quickly and establish broad-based rapport. I have never met a person with whom I couldn't work. In 1998, I returned to school and to teaching. I earned a master's at Bank Street College in 2002 and have been in the classroom ever since, much of that time in the Dartmouth School District, where I had the pleasure of working with our current superintendent, Mrs. Riley. I intimately understand the day-to-day realities of the policies that the school committee establishes. On the school committee, my top priority would be to strengthen academic rigor. One approach is improving RICAS scores. I've worked with MCAS since 2002 through Common Core, through Park, and MCAS 2.0. I've seen scores improve, and I understand the hard work that that requires from students and teachers. Test scores matter, but preparing students to thrive in an ever-changing world requires that we educate the whole child. Our schools give us the opportunity to shape the future Portsmouth, guiding our students as they become friends, neighbors, and colleagues. I'd be honored to be part of that process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McDade. I realize, I realize when I wave, if you're not looking up, it's kind of hard. I didn't know what I was gonna... No projectiles. No projectiles.
Probably not to everyone.
Next up, we have Mr. Juan Carlos Payero?
Payero, don't worry. No one's ever gotten it right.
All right.
My wife got it wrong the first time, too.
Carlos part of the Payero.
Payero was because she was hungry. And good evening, members of the council and public. I can go on forever about my own background, but I provided that to the council. You guys can review it. But I really wanted to dive into one issue that's particularly important to me, to kind of ditto what the other two previous applicants have said before. Emotional learning and emotional intelligence is something that's extremely important to me, and I think should be the bedrock behind academics for all of our students. And for those that don't know, it's the ability to understand and interpret your own emotions and those of someone else's. It's super-important for our students, staff, and schools to be emotionally intelligent because it makes them more self-aware, it makes them empathetic, develop better communication skills, and dealing with the stressors of the education system. But it has to be done horizontally, not just vertically. And it has to be done in order to make sure that the schools feel empowered, and when schools feel empowered, students always succeed. And it goes for the same with staff. Schools that are emotionally intelligent are better able to address issues like bullying that I would love to address, violence, self-harm, which we see all too often in all of our schools. And it's about developing the proper climate for all of our students to succeed because when we put out Portsmouth students to the world, we need to make sure that they are well-rounded individuals that are ready to succeed and represent us the best way possible. Another thing is parent engagement. We all know that involved parents create the best possible students, but we need to make sure that we're creating the best possible avenues for all students regardless of their own situation, to be able to be involved in creating those pathways forward. Although very minute, very school-based, I think that given my experience, I want to make sure that this is possible and that the committee itself creates the climate necessary to empower our schools and administrators to be able to do so. Thank you so much for your time.
You still have five seconds.
Hmm. So you're supposed to say, "I reserve the right to contact..."
Just give me one second. There's no extra points for finishing under budget.
Well, wait, wait.
There's none taken for if you go over a little, but thank you. Okay.
Plenty of extra points for finishing under budget.
Yes.
You're a lot of times different.
Next, we have Mr. John Schlesinger.
Thank you very much. Some of you I know, some of you I know better. Some of you I'll get to know, hopefully. Hi. Everybody knows, we all have qualifications. I'm a parent. I think the first, most important thing in education is parents. I think we should rely on them. I think we should ask more from them. I think they should ask more from themselves. I think that we've gotten into a rut sometimes where we have all these test scores, and we look at them and they mean something, and we're like, "Oh, thirty-nine percent on RICAS." What does it really mean? I mean, there's so many things underneath that that I think that we need to boil down. First thing, I'd like to teach more and test less. I'd like to learn more and worry about testing less. I'd like for my kids to read more and write more, and I don't think we do enough of that. And it all starts at home, because that's where the kids are for those other sixteen hours of the day. I know I have more time. I'm going to yield it because I think that you guys have valuable decisions to make, and hopefully you'll make what's best for Portsmouth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our final candidate, it's Mr. Jason, is it Spitalnik?
You actually got it right. Yep, Spitalnik. So I'm from Spitalnik. I live at 44 Wapping Road. My wife and I moved to Portsmouth. We were living in Newport for quite a while, because we now have a four-year-old, and we wanted to go to Portsmouth schools because we thought they were better. Joining school committee would mean that we can always make them even better. I bring something different, I think, to the table than everybody else, is that I'm a community organizer. I started a nonprofit organization called Sustainable Equidnic in 2012. From there, we turned it into Equidnic Community Table in 2016, where I was vice president for a while. We have sixty-seven community garden beds now around Equidnic Island, plus fourteen more that are at Pell School and at the Met School. We started this compost coalition with Clean Ocean Access. We now just got a $300,000 grant for pilot programs in Newport and Middletown. I'm throwing all this stuff out there just to show you that these things that I've gotten behind have gotten done. And why that's important for the schools is because I have meetings with the Equidnic Land Trust and Equidnic Community Table and Clean Ocean Access, Eleventh Hour Racing, because all of these nonprofits and foundations talk about the schools. And if you really want to make change for resilient Equidnic Island and, as large a picture, Rhode Island, you need to start with the kids. And that could be community gardens, it could be single-use plastic, and these are the things that I'd like to see changed. School gardens, which would be very valuable to teach children how to grow food, compost bins, to show people, teach children, get them familiar with their trash, they know what away actually is. And food, very important, to get good, healthy food in the schools, which seem to be lacking these days. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, I would like to thank each of the applicants, you know, for expressing their interest in seeking an appointment to the school committee. Again, I think we have, you know, five very qualified candidates here, and, you know, it's a shame that only two are going to be appointed. It's not a reflection of the other three. I think you're all worthy. You all have your strengths collectively. Whichever two are appointed, I think, will also help the school committee out, but I would encourage the folks that are not selected to still please participate, stay involved in the community, and help make Portsmouth, you know, a better community. There's lots of opportunities to help out. So with that, what I'd like to do is I will open the floor to each of the counselors, and we'll just kind of go around the table. Mr. Ryan, are you...
I have the least time to prepare when I'm...
Sorry.
Most people like them.
Really?
Oh, the big man. You're done.
I like the analogy. So it's going to be painful and bloody.
You could defer. You could defer.
That's fine. That's fine. So, all right. So my very roughly thought-out comments. I did actually review everybody's letters and resumes, and I, you know, I have to agree with our council president that this is an amazingly talented, intelligent, and accomplished group of people. I did not realize Portsmouth had so many of these people in it. I'm surprised we are not sort of like buying Manhattan, because, you know, obviously we have the talent to do it. So I think all of, you know, I agree, all of these, all of our candidates have things to offer our school department, and I would encourage the two folks who are, who are not hurt tonight to please register to vote as soon as possible, because you are clearly have a lot to offer this town, and the town, God knows, the town needs it. So, that said, why do I like each? I don't know. Are we supposed to say why we like each of these candidates?
It's up to you to, you could...
To say what I feel.
Say what you feel.
With the spirit moved. So I know pretty much all of these, I know pretty much all of these candidates, to greater or less degree, except for Mr. Spitalnik, who I haven't really, haven't had the chance to chat with. I know Ms. Chergen from her work in the rain garden over in Convent Point, and Ms. McDade from her work on the town Democratic Committee, and Mr. Payero from the same source. I spent a particularly lovely, rainy, cold, miserable day in the St. Barnabas parking lot with Mr. Schlesinger, who made the day much more bearable by actually being able to talk about just about anything, which I was kind of amazed by. So I think, yeah, I think all of these candidates will bring strengths to the table. I like the fact that several of them, particularly Ms. McDade, have so much education and experience in education. I like the fact that there are at least two community organizers here, three, actually. I like that all of them have been successful with their businesses. And so, yeah, I think any of these people would be a good addition. Are we supposed to be voting right off the bat?
Nope. Nope. No. I mean, it's really a question of if you had specific comments about each of the applicants.
Yeah. So again, I appreciate all of your applications, and I will be voting on you folks shortly. And I'll have to rank you, which is difficult. And I feel like I'm hardly qualified to do that, but I have to. So again, I wanted to thank all the applicants for their efforts in applying for these positions, and we will be voting shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Mr. Katzen?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all of the applicants. We have quite a diversity of qualifications and backgrounds. I will be saying who I'm favoring. I don't think there's any need to hide the ball on that. And I would encourage Mr. Ryan, if he has another chance, to say so as well, but every voter makes a decision on who they're supporting based on the criteria that matter to them. Every employer makes hiring decisions based on the criteria that matter to them, and they can be different. So some may favor educational credentials and college degrees, some may favor or weigh heavier life experiences. And so for a host of different reasons, I find that of all of the applicants, a few rise to the top. I'll echo what Mr. Aguirre said. It is unfortunate we can only appoint two folks. And what I hope is that those who are not appointed become involved in, if school department matters are of their interest, to become involved. There's, I'm sure, no shortage of help that the school committee can need for people to serve on their subcommittees. In terms of the candidate, the applicants, that I think bring a set of credentials that will work best with the current school committee, and I just want to speak to that for a very quick moment. One of the things I want to make sure of is that whoever is appointed can work well with the current, very high-functioning group of people who make up the school committee. And the school committee itself is currently people from different parties and different backgrounds and different orientations to whether they have kids in the school or don't. So, but they have been a very well-run group, and so one of the things that is important to me is that I glean from the applicants that they can work with that particular group. I'm looking to, I will be supporting one of the following, and this is in no particular order. Karen McDade, Sarah Chergen, and Juan Carlos Payero, I believe, in my opinion, rise to the top. I recognize that's three. I can only support two. Mr. Payero brings a background in communications and outreach that I think the school committee would be well-served by. Ms. McDade brings a wealth of knowledge of the Massachusetts school system, which can be informative to Portsmouth Department as it grapples with the requirements of RICAS. And Ms. Chergen brings an enormous amount of credentials in rolling up her sleeves and working with various facets of the school department system that needed help. So I don't know that I need to belabor those points. There are a host of other things I could say about each of these three candidates, but I look forward to hearing what my other council members' thoughts are. And then at some point, of course, we will be voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katzen. Ms. Jafuz?
Okay, yes, I'd just like to echo what's already been said about how impressed I am with all the candidates and how thankful we are that you've put your hat in the ring. It's not easy to do that. I also want to say that we, from my perspective, it's not that we want the best candidate, we want the best school committee. And what I mean by that is that my primary concerns are that we add an expertise, an experience, a point of view that perhaps might be underrepresented, and that the candidates also show commitment to their community and an ability to work well with others. So those would be my criteria. And I'll just say something positive about each of them, but I think I echo what Mr. Katzen has said about the top three choices, and pretty much for the same reasons. Mr. Payero does have expertise in community outreach and engagement, and I think that's a skill set that might be lacking a bit in the current structure of current members of the committee, as does Ms. Chergen, who also has a special needs child, and I think that that perspective could be helpful. And she's also an attorney and has worked on various environmental issues. And Mrs. McDade, as a teacher in the public schools in Massachusetts, also with her focus on reading and literacy and her experience as a, writing a children's music book and having an MBA from Wharton, I think those are perspectives that are also really positive. But, you know, of course, I'm very impressed by Mr. Schlesinger's impressive IT resume and community work. And Mr. Spitalnik, you know, I'm very tempted to support you because you are so different from the other candidates. You're young. No, in the sense, no, no. In area of...
It's out there now, on the record.
He's blushing, Linda. Excuse me. No, in area of expertise, certainly, you have a different perspective. You went to Johnson &amp; Wales, and it's not a program that's largely, you know, an academic program. And I think that that kind of perspective is important in the school committee, because not all of our students are heading towards academic careers. So I feel like you could offer a really interesting perspective, and, you know, having started your own business, and the interests that you have are very different than, well, I'd say, almost all of the other candidates. So that's what I mean by that. So I guess I would also say, even though we're supposed to pick the top two, I would, three kind of bubble to the top for me, and I don't, I would be willing to hear what my colleagues have to say.
Are you going to go?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to take that privilege a lot.
Absolutely. Okay. So I'm going to take a step back here for a moment and say that I think I'm the only one sitting up here who has young kids in the elementary schools. I spend a fair amount of time volunteering in the classrooms. I am in that line at pickup several days a week, talking to the moms, watching my kids play in the playground, and talking to the moms, and those are the people that are my friends. And I will say that overwhelmingly, everyone's very happy with the educational system in Portsmouth. We're happy with our teachers, we're happy with the schools. Yeah, there's room for improvement. Yeah, it would be great to see higher test scores. Yeah, there's the random teacher here or there who's not fantastic, and you prefer somebody else. And, you know, we have little ups and downs everywhere. But I will say that there is one huge area where the majority of parents that I speak to are very disappointed, and there's a huge room for improvement, and we seriously have the entire system wrong, and that's in our cafeteria. We are feeding our kids garbage, we are not recycling, we are not teaching our kids good habits, we don't have school gardens. And Mr. Spitalnick is the only one that addresses these issues, and I think he would bring a very important perspective to our school committee. And I agree with what Mrs. Ujifusa said, that we need a well-rounded school committee, and somebody that will address all the issues that concern our residents. And I feel like that is one area where we really have a lot of work to do, and I would like to see somebody championing that within our school committee. So I will be supporting Mr. Spitalnick. Beyond him, to be honest, it's really hard to pick. I think we have some really good candidates. I love that Mr. Payero brings a different perspective with all his experience from a different state. I think that that could be very good, and the communications aspect. Ms. Chergan's community organizing and your involvement with the special-needs program is fantastic. I know Mr. Schlesinger well, and we've taught after-school enrichment together, and I know his heart is in the right place, and he cares about the things that we could be doing better to improve in our schools. One of the applicants that's not being considered tonight was one of my top choices as well, and I think she would have been a fantastic candidate, and I hope that maybe I can convince her to run in two years. And Ms. McDade, I don't know you very well, but your resume is fantastic. So I will take everybody else's comments into consideration and vote accordingly.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you.
Mr. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too, after what everybody has said, I am thrilled that we have had seven great candidates, we have five great candidates in front of us. A few things rise to the top to me, and one of my main criterias, as I look at the current makeup of the school committee and the applicants that we have, is having children in the system right now. We currently have four of five members of the school committee. Correct me if I'm wrong, Emily, do you have kids in the school committee? No. Okay. So four of the five members of the school committee currently do not have children in the school committee. And I think that's a valuable thing for the community to be involved, and the kids who come home from school, be able to talk to their parent who was on the school committee to say, hey, this is what's going on at school, this is what I saw today, this is what I learned today, this is what happened today. And for that parent to be able to go to a school committee either that night, or reach out to, you know, to have the ear of the superintendent and other people in the system to help make changes if there are issues in the school. For the past, I don't know, six, seven, eight years, we haven't had that. We have it now, with Kate being one. So, and then the second thing that really rises to the top for me is somebody who stuck their name, stuck their name out there, stuck their neck on the line, and said, hey, I'm going to put myself together and I'm going to run for this office, and go out, campaign, as Dr. Ryan mentioned, stand in the pouring rain at St. Barnabas on a very cold, cold election day. And to be honest, when you look at the results, he got more votes than all the two of us sitting up here. So I think that says something of Mr. Schlesinger, that he deserves the position. When I look at the other candidates, and Ms. McDade is a fabulous candidate, she misses that one mark, because, God bless him, they have a son who's at RPI now, which is fantastic. And he's gone through the fourth of the school system, he's at one of the finest polytechnic institutes in the country. And I think the perspective that Ms. Chergan can bring with a special-needs child can be a huge asset to the school committee. So for me, the top two candidates are Ms. Chergan and Mr. Schlesinger.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
I think, I'm going last here now. I appreciate all the comments, and I also have made a lot of notes tonight, similar checking the box on each of the applicants in reviewing things. You know, I thought, you know, Mrs. Chergan's work over at Melville, making that outdoor classroom kind of an educational experience for the kids, as well as for the community, that's something that I see more and more of outside of Portsmouth and other schools and in college atmospheres, where they're trying to take the environment, the stormwater, bringing those things and making an awareness to the, you know, to the students, to the faculty, to the community, the importance of our environment and protecting it. And so, you know, those, you know, that type of thing there stands out to me. You also mentioned, you know, your son tonight, I didn't know that tonight, but, you know, knowing that you have that special-needs goals as part of something in the school committee, that was something I was also trying to look at, each person's goals and their responses. And again, it's a tough job to sit here tonight and try to pick two applicants. And you kind of have to split hairs a little bit to see, how do you differentiate? Because, you know, everybody brings something to the table. Ms. McDade, also a teacher, business degree, I think you, you know, can provide a certain level of expertise to the school committee. Mr. Payero, I was very impressed, and I made notes, and I wanted to make sure I, and you touched base on it. I was, what caught me was the emotional aspect of what you were talking about, and I'm glad you expanded on it tonight, because I wasn't going to be able to ask the question, but it was one of those where you talked about being able to get the families more involved, making the schools a safer place for not only the students, but also for the teachers, trying to address the atmosphere and maybe the culture of making it a positive experience, a positive workplace. I kind of got you, got the idea that you were kind of the big-picture thinker, maybe someone who was thinking outside the box, and how do you, how do you make something better? How do you take something and make it better? And maybe that's a complimentary piece to the school department, maybe it's a complimentary piece to some of the other folks who might bring a teaching experience, a business experience, a technology experience. So again, I think having some diverse folks on the school committee can only be a benefit. Going down, Mr. Schlesinger, I think, again, former teacher, business, technology, you understand that, you know, technology continues to advance. Bringing technology into the classroom, that's something that has to be integrated and taken into consideration, you know, moving forward. You know, we need to make sure that our, our students, you know, have all the tools they need to succeed. And, you know, the, the technology piece is still only a tool, we still need good teachers, we still need good programs, we need to make sure that the students know how to use those tools, and I think that's very important. Again, you made some good points tonight in your, in your brief presentation. And then, Mr. Spitalnick, I got the same impression of, as was mentioned tonight, more of the community organizer. You're not coming into this as a, as a, as a, you know, teacher in the school system, but you do have teaching experience, you do have community organizational experience, you're a business owner. You bring a different perspective, and that's something that, you know, should not, you know, go unnoticed. So I, you know, I sit here tonight, and yeah, we have a very tough choice, and I get to oversee this. I, I'm curious to see how the, you know, you know, how this is going to go tonight. We have some very good candidates. I think whoever gets selected is going to be a fine addition to the school committee. And so with that, we're going to open the floor to motions.
Dr. Ryan?
I'd like to nominate Karen McDade to the school committee.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor for Karen McDade being appointed to the school committee?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Oh, so what did we have?
That was four.
Four?
One.
One.
Aye.
Five. Okay. That was a four and a half.
Yeah.
Four to one, four.
Five.
Five, I'm sorry, five to one in favor of Mrs. McDade.
You have an engineering degree, I think.
I know, but it was...
That's not the math.
I needed, I needed the abacus to... Okay, so we have one appointment. Congratulations, Mrs. McDade. I was going to congratulate them both at the end, but that's okay. I know, well, you know. So moving on now, we still have to make a second appointment. Do we have any more?
Mr. President, I would like to nominate Mr. John Schlesinger, again, being he's the only one who originally applied for the job by, back in June, when he applied and run for the office. He also has two lovely children in the school system, both are sitting very patiently, one smiling at us. And I think his, two things on his resume that jump out, A, his IT skills, and B, and one that was somewhat common for all the candidates was grant-writing ability across the board would be a good asset for the, for the school committee.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Schlesinger to the school committee. So with that, all those in favor of appointing Mr. Schlesinger to the school committee? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we, so the motion fails at three to three?
Mr. President, may I make a suggestion?
You may.
Should we proceed, and if we have two ties, maybe consider a runoff?
Just go on to the next candidate.
I mean, we could, yeah.
I made one, if somebody else wants to make another, otherwise I'll make a second one, but that's up to the rest of the candidates.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Juan Carlos Payero.
Okay. Motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for Mr. Payero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'll go with the ayes. Sorry, sorry.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd just like to, if I may, since we have our two candidates at this point, I want both the winners to realize that these are, my votes were not against you individually, because I thought we had other candidates that were better qualified.
I think we all feel that way. This was a really good group, you know, having to choose like this.
I've already mentioned my two first choices, neither one were in the top, but I think, I get back to Danielle's point that we had seven great candidates, and unfortunately, two are not registered voters.
It will be thirty years.
And I echo that, I hope that all of you who didn't get selected tonight in June of 2020, put your name on the ballot.
Absolutely.
Or register, put your name on the ballot.
And I would like to add that I think maybe we need to put a little bit more thought into our process for next time, because I think, and I did make this recommendation, that if we had gone through and each ranked our choices, we might have ended up with different candidates. Instead, it's all up to who gets nominated first, and I don't feel like that's the most fair or transparent or democratic process. I would rather have seen us all rank our, all our candidates, and then maybe voted on our, you know, picked the top for each one, and then maybe each voted on the top two or three, and I think we would have had more solid support for our candidates if we had gone that way, so.
Okay, thank you. Other, any more comments?
Just, I hope they're ready to hit the ground running. You guys swearing in tonight?
Background check.
They have background checks.
Background check.
Were all the candidates aware of that?
Yes. Yeah, it was on the ad. Again, I'd like to thank everyone. Congratulations to our two newest members pending background check.
I'm going to go on with the great assumption that they're all going to get, the two are going to get their background check done, but in order to not delay the process, do we select a alternate applicant?
No.
From today?
That's not a bad suggestion, but I think it...
We'd find ourselves back here in January selecting somebody.
And so, and so be it. There are currently two vacancies, we've had our two votes, and I think we don't want to vote a contingency, let's just let it be.
Could I ask when they're going to be sworn in?
After their background check.
Which takes...
And who will...
No time.
They have to go to the police station tomorrow morning, fill out a form, and then background check takes five minutes. And slowly, they look them up in a computer based on name, and if nothing, if their name doesn't pop up with a picture, you have to...
Yeah.
If Juan Carlos's name doesn't pop up with his picture that says, you know, he's a ex-murderer from Wisconsin, then he's good to go.
And Emily, the school committee will, will take care of swearing them in before the...
No, I will do this.
Once background checked, they go to the clerk's office.
Okay, but before the, before the training that's going to happen?
If they're sworn in, I can...
We don't want them to miss the Brian.
As soon as they've gotten their background checks, I can swear them in.
A BCI check takes five minutes at the police station, and then once they got the approval, they come back up here to the clerk's office. And if you do it tomorrow at lunchtime, it's a hot look.
Yeah, you do.
Just saying.
I'm bringing pulled pork.
Fantastic.
Mr. President, I again want to thank all of the applicants and congratulate those selected, and I move, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, six to zero.